Good to hear all of the Phase 3 news today. That's great.
Can hold our Toucha Farmer event.
Okay, it's 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome all members of council for joining us tonight, members of staff, and to everyone that are watching on Facebook. We're hoping that this will be our last Zoom meeting. We're hoping to maybe meet live for the next meeting, but anyways, we'll have to make that decision as we go and see how things go. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof? Seeing none, we will go to accepting the agenda. A motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Council Wentzink, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, July 13, 2020. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Adoption of the previous minutes. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Manley, for the following meeting be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council, June 22, 2020. Any discussion on the minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I see that item G, the sixth concession, which is resolution number nine, there's no indication if the motion was carried or not.
I believe it was deferred. Am I correct?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I believe that concession six was deferred.
Okay, it doesn't say it on there, though.
Okay. So maybe if we can, Madam CEO, we'll let the minutes reflect that?
Yes, if you want to change them, I'll let the deputy clerk know.
Okay, perfect. So that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as amended. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Just gonna make that change on here. We have no delegations. Moving on to staff report, we have the CEO Clerk's Department bylaws 31-2020 by-election. I have a motion moved by Council Wentzink, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receive staff report number AD 202013, and that a by-election be held to fill the vacancy for the Office of Counselor representing Ward 3 in the Township of North Glengarry, and that the by-election be administered via in-person voting only, and that voting day be Friday, September 25, 2020, and that council adopt bylaw 31-2020 being a bylaw to require a by-election to fill the vacancy for the Office of Township Counselor representing Ward 3, and that bylaw 31-2020 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 13th day of July, 2020. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council will remember that we voted in April of 2020 to stop the by-election procedure due to COVID-19. So this is a staff report bringing back to council the by-election to restart that clock. So we're recommending that the nomination day be August 13, and that voting day be Friday, September 25. And we're also recommending that we do five days of in-person voting, and it be paper ballot only.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's unfortunate that we've gotten to this point after we've lost a great counselor at De Prado, but we do have to move forward. And any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Sir, I'm really glad that we're doing five days of voting here. It's really gonna give people the opportunity to get out and vote and not be stuck having to just do a brief time. Just with regards to the nomination day, so does that mean then that people who are interested in putting their filing their papers can file as soon as Monday?
So they can file as soon as tomorrow if the resolution passes tonight. We've alerted the Glengarry News to this happening, so if the resolution passes as is tonight, then they'll be putting something in the paper for this week. And then that way, we can get the interested candidates ready to go. But yeah, they can certainly come in. The deputy clerk is ready with the nomination papers, so she's ready to go as of tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Also, are we planning on a handbook for the people that will be running on how to, you know, manage a campaign during a pandemic? You know, when we're talking about door knocking and those kinds of things?
Yeah, so we're already starting to put together some of the procedures and policies what we're looking at doing. I have started a candidate manual, but certainly we'll have to put in additional information in there for COVID-19. So clearly, people would recommend to wear a mask when they do door-to-door and not maybe enter people's homes and have them come outside, so we can offer some safe practices for doing their campaigning. We'll also be doing a special arrangement at Island Park for the day of the voting. So we'll having the main entrance be the Egress Inn. We'll have a certain amount of people we will want in the building, and then we'll have them exit at the north side of the building. So there'll be like a flow-through. We're also looking at two or three voting stations and some staff to help out. So we've already started to work through that, some of that with the staff that have done the elections in the past.
Okay, Councilman Manley, you had a question?
Yeah, just wondering, sir, was there any thought about adding online voting as well to that, or was that ruled out?
We certainly can if council wants to add the online. The good thing about the in-person is that the pieces of paper that go out to people are very simple. So it basically just says that you can vote, and there's no code or anything. You just come in, you give us your piece of paper, like the federal, the provincial elections, and then we give you one ballot. So it's different when you're not having to deal with all the different wards and the school board. So it is a easier way. It's more complicated when you get into the online. I'm not saying it's not a good way to do the voting. It does allow people to do voting at home. But to do it in such a short period of time, it's easier to just to have that voting card. And then if you do not get your voting card, we'll also have a secondary desk set up for you to come and be able to prove your location in Alexandria, and then you can vote.
Well, I guess the fact that this is just residents of Alexandria, they're gonna be voting for this. So it's not, they're not traveling. I mean, it's fairly close for them, too. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was kind of the point when we talked about it. Also, I mean, there is a cost that comes with doing it online, and I think staff is doing this at the least amount of money possible. I don't imagine it's going to cost the township very much money to run the election, other than some advertising, so.
Okay.
I think it'll go there, and back with over five days, it gives the opportunity for residents to slowly trickle in and vote. I mean, I'm not sure exactly how many people voted in the Alexandria ward last time, but I don't think it was more than 900 people. So definitely not more than that. So it should be, there should be some good social distancing by that point, so. Councilor Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just regarding the nursing homes and the different people that cannot come to, is there like, I know in the past elections, we did have a setup that, or people went to these nursing homes and care homes. Is that gonna be set up, too, or?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I was speaking to Deputy Clerk actually about that last week. So we'll have to be in touch with the nursing homes to see if it's safe for us to go in. So that's going to be the number one concern with the COVID-19. If they determine that it is safe for us to go in, we'll have to figure out the easiest and the safest way to do that. So we'll probably meet with them next week when I'm back and have those conversations with them to see the best way for them to be able to do it. We don't want to put any residents at risk, although we will obviously be having masks on. We just want to make sure. We can always take a tabulator with us, and they can do the paper ballot as well. That's not a problem. But we just want to make sure that we're allowed in, and if we are, then we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to CEO Clerk's Department, B Rental of Apple Hill Medical Center Building. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Council Wentzink, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receive staff report number AD 202014, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry authorize the mayor and CEO to enter into a lease agreement with CEBEM Catering, and that council adopt bylaw 32-2020 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a lease agreement with CEBEM catering for a portion of the property known as the 3749 Old Orchard Street, and that bylaw 32-2020 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 13th day of July, 2020. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a while ago, I was approached by the owner, Elwyn Massia, of CEBEM Catering. He approached us about the old Apple Hill Medical Building. So the township owns that building on the same parcel of land as the community center, and it's been vacant since 2012, according to staff. So Elwyn asked if we would consider possibly renting it to him for a catering business. So the CBO and I attended the medical center with Elwyn, and we took a look at the building, following, obviously, council's approval to do so. So we had a council's approval to entertain the idea of renting it to Elwyn. So upon going to the building with Elwyn, he was determined that it was a feasible place for what he wanted to do. So his business is actually going to be the preparation of a catering service for seniors. So he'll be doing food prepared there in a commercial kitchen, and he'll be either delivering or having people pick up at the site those prepared meals. And he's starting with the seniors because he personally has had some experience and also has had some requests from the public for those types of catering businesses. So in the discussions with Elwyn, we discussed that all of the costs for the renovations would be borne by his company, that the township would have no costs associated with that, and any approvals that were necessary. So the EOHU, we know, will definitely be an active partner in this. And any other building permits or any other permits he needs through the Electrical Safety Authority, he'll have to do on his side. That although the township owns the property, it's important for us to maintain that, like being a second, a third party to it, because the building permits obviously will be approved by our CBO. So we have gathered all that information, and we've been negotiating with Mr. Massia around the lease you see before you this evening. The one hitch with the property is that currently it's zoned institutional because we own it. So it's a municipally-owned building, and it was previously used for a doctor's office, which is an institutional use. So if Mr. Massia is going to operate the catering business, it automatically will trigger a zoning change to commercial. So we would have to do that. There's no cost associated with that because changing zoning is just through our own township. So we'll have to have our planners to start on that. We wanted to bring the lease to you first, just to make sure that everything was okay before we started that zoning change. So everything else, as far as any details are in the lease that you have in front of you in the bylaw, so.
Okay, thank you. And how long has it been vacant for?
Since 2012.
Eight years. Okay, Councilor Manley?
Just a couple of questions. First one, sir, just so the zoning would change on the whole property or just for the building itself, just for the?
Just for the building itself.
Okay, all right. And a follow-up to that. I noticed, I read all the, on Schedule B, there's a bunch of sort of rules and regulations. I know that the Legion has used, because the Senate tap is right in front of that building, have used that site for Remembrance Day for the last four or five years, I think now, since we've had a Remembrance Day service in Apple Hill. Is that something we need to put in the schedule, that it's okay to be used for that type of thing? Or is that just, am I overthinking that or whatever?
It was actually something Elwyn and I had spoken about when he was there, and he said he would actually close that day entirely. So he's very aware of that, being from that area, so he knows that they use that. And he also talked about just doing certain community events also, but that was one of the things we talked about, that that would be pre-entire that day to be used.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I certainly support renting this out to Elwyn so that he can run a good business through there, and it'll make some use out of the property. I would just like to see in the future, I don't know whether, you know, councils willing to consider this or not, but I'd like to see us for accountability and transparency purposes when it comes to leasing municipal properties. I'd just like to see us have a very simple public notification process, just so that the public is aware that there is a property that is up for lease and that the public are, all the public have the opportunity. And I'd just like to see us do that in the future, although, you know, I think that this is a good opportunity here tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any further comments? Councilor Massey?
I just want to add that it's great that Apple Hill is getting, our small communities are getting a new business. I'd like to see that all over the place. It'd be nice if we can add one every six months or something. So it's nice that with council approval, you can get a business going in Apple Hill, and God knows, we know that our small communities need them, and I wish them all the luck in the world.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further questions or comments? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Planning, Building, and Bylaw Enforcement Department, bylaw 2030-2020 Cannabis Related Development Housekeeping. I have a motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approve the Cannabis Related Development Housekeeping bylaw 30-2020. The housekeeping zoning bylaw was approved by the Planning Committee on June 22, 2020, and that council adopt bylaw 30-2020, and that bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council the 13th day of July, 2020. Welcome, Kasha.
Bylaw Planning Committee on June 22, I did not receive further comments.
Can't hear you.
A hard time hearing you, Kasha.
So there was no further comments from the public for this bylaw? After the delayed period of two weeks from the planning meeting where it was approved, I did receive a couple of emails, so there is a few interested parties that would like to probably start a cannabis production facility. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Councilor Massey, all those opposed? Councilor Massey is opposed. All the rest are in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Public Works Department, Concession 6 Road update. I have a motion moved by Council William, seconded by Council, Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Council Noble, that report PW 202014 concession road 6 update be received for information, and further, that council authorize a cold-in-place option for concession 6. Welcome, Doug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. At our June 22, 2020 meeting of council, you confirmed your wish to pulverize and pave concession road 6 from the end of what I'll call Phase 1, all the way to County Road 30. We discussed with the county what they wanted to do with the limits at County Road 30, and they had suggested that we might want to consider a cold-in-place recycling option. So cold-in-place is what's going on on County Road 24, I believe it is. We, I don't think we've ever done this, but it essentially, it takes up the existing asphalt. It adds asphalt cement, and it places it back down as a cold-in-place recycled asphalt, and then you pave over it. That has a benefit of giving you a more stable base, although the granular base on concession road 6 isn't that great. And then if in the future, if you have a pothole on top lift, it's easier to maintain. So typically, it's slightly more expensive. However, the county has given us an estimate in the order of $680,000, which is less than the estimate that we gave you for the pulverized and paved. So basically, we are suggesting that you might want to consider a cold-in-place recycling option, and the benefit with that is we can also take advantage of the county tender.
Perfect, thank you. Questions from members of council? Councilor, Deputy Mayor Williams, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, I think this is an excellent option. Sitting on county's council, Ben Dehan reviews this process with us regularly, and I think it's an excellent option to give that road extra stability. And I think environmentally, it's probably quite sensible, too, because it reuses the existing pulverized material rather than having to cart it off. And I certainly like the price tag, so thank you. Good option, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Councilor Manley?
Yeah, I'll second that. I think this is a great, great opportunity for us for concession 6, for sure. And if we get more additional stability out of that road with doing the cold-in-place, I think it's definitely the way to go. So Doug, I'm noticing that that's probably about, if things come in as what they're budgeted, about $35,000 in savings from what we had originally budgeted, is the plan to take that 35 and move it to some of our other roads?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, my approach is to give you updates on where we are with respect to budget, and if there are additional roads we can do, so for example, the next report, Roads in Need. If there are additional things we can do, I think it's best for you to maximize what you've set aside for roadwork in 2020.
Okay, thank you. And Doug, do we know when they would plan on doing this?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I understand that their contractor, the county's contractor, wants to get going. And so I would expect if you approve, they would start very shortly.
Okay, that's good news. Of course, normally, we would be saying, well, make sure it's not before Highland Games weekend, but I guess we don't have to worry about that this year. So are there any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Okay, moving on to Roads in Need update. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Council Noble, that report PW 202015 Roads in Need update be received for information, and further, that council authorize staff to proceed with the reconstruction, including culverts of Front Street East from East Boundary Road to approximately 300 meters west at an estimated cost of $93,000. The removal and replacement of asphalt on River Road from East Boundary Road to the bridge, approximately 2,000 meters, at an estimated cost of $206,000, and geotechnical investigations at a number of locations across the township to an offset limit of $34,000. Take it away, Doug.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. At your June 17, 2020 committee of the whole meeting, we presented a report similar to this, and council deferred it. And council members asked if staff could review Annex Street and Victoria Street West. Staff also reviewed other known problem areas in Alexandria. So I've given you a summary of options and costs. Basically, we are still recommending that you do what we had suggested in our first meeting, being Front Street East and River Road, and then geotechnical investigations. However, there are a number of options available to you. We are suggesting that Annex Street, which currently carries truck traffic, if you do want to reconstruct that street, that you might want to consider additional measures related to trucks. That being said, one of your medium or short-term objectives is to divert truck traffic around the central core. And so you might want to think about that before you recommend Annex Street. And then one of the options we also presented for you was William Street. And one of the issues on William Street is you have a number of different drainage systems, and maybe you might want to look at all of those drainage issues before you reconstruct William Street. So basically, Mr. Mayor, we are still recommending that you proceed with Front Street East from East Boundary Road to 300 meters west and River Road, which is just take off the asphalt and pave approximately 2,000 meters.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any questions from members of council? Councilor Manley?
Yeah, Doug, just wondering, I know that you had put for Front Street up to the bridge, I believe, or sorry, River Road up to the bridge, but I know it's paved past the bridge, sort of almost up to the corner. There might be another 200 meters or something like that. Is the plan to continue that as far as they can or whatever?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the ideas or concepts be to do River Road is to perhaps pave it all the way out to County Road 10. It would be a possibility to go that extra 200 meters because really, it's not that much of an incremental cost. Depending on what council might think about paving River Road out to County Road 10, maybe next year, we could do those extra 200 meters or so. In the grand scheme, it's not a big issue. If you wanted to give direction tonight as to whether you want to do those extra 200 meters, we could do that. And in terms of budget, it's not a significant issue, and we can manage that budget internally.
Plus, we have that extra $34,000 that we just saved on the previous tender that we're hoping to have saved on the previous tender. Councilor Manley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want, my personal opinion is that that I think we need to look at that road in our roads need study, that the part that's gravel right now for River Road, before we, so look at our, make our roads need study sort of have a look at that or whatever. But I think in order, I think we should be repaving right now what is already paved or hard-surfaced, because I think we'll have some disappointed people right at the corner there that there's several houses there, I believe, two or three houses there. It'll be disappointing for them, I'm sure, if, and we just, we stop at the bridge and we don't go up to their properties or whatever. So that's my feeling.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with councillor Manley about leaving the gravel gravel. Well, we traveled it actually, because we were on a, on a different tour that ended up being an agricultural tour combined with a roads tour. So it was a bit of a bonus, right, Jeff? In any case, I, 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 the, the road, the gravel portion was in, was in good condition. It's not heavily populated. I, I don't really see the sense in, in, in paving it. But, you know, if it, if it really doesn't, you know, in, in terms of the cost doesn't make a difference, then I don't know, perhaps we should consider it. But if it does cost, you said it's an incremental cost. I, I'm not sure what that means. So maybe you could let us know about that. But I, I guess my question is, is, is with these options we've been given, one through seven and a one through eight, rather. Option number one will basically use up the entire budget. Is that correct, Doug?
No, Deputy Mayor, option, sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman. Option one, Front Street East is only ninety three thousand of the total three hundred and thirty three.
Oh, okay. All right. I was reading that wrong. I see what you're saying. Okay. So then so, so we need to pick other ones in there that, that are priorities as well then.
He's already done that.
Yeah.
So they have been prioritized. These are your recommendations in a prioritized. Because this is more than three hundred and thirty three thousand of all those options.
Yeah, and number one and number two go together. And that pretty much takes up what you were looking at, Karma, and that pretty much takes up the budget.
Plus doing some geotechnical investigation. So yeah, so options one and two together will lead up that budget.
Okay, so that, that's, that's what I was wondering about. And the, does, does, is number three included, the forty thousand for GeoTech? Because that's, I think we've determined that as a priority. Is that included in there, Doug?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we recommended forty thousand for geotechnical. However, because number one and number two add up to so much, there's only thirty four thousand dollars available for geotechnical investigations.
Councillor Manley.
I would like to propose then that we take the savings from the concession six cold in place and top up the geotechnical investigations to a maximum of forty thousand dollars and use the remaining money that we save from concession six to put into number four, isolated overlays. And that we leave Victoria Street, Anick, William and Albert until we have a look at our, our new Roads Need Study and see where they're identified in, in that Roads Need Study.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yes, I, I, I quite agree with councillor Manley's suggestion. And, you know, in case, I mean, you never know what, what, what might be left over in your budget at the end of the day. There, there are some isolated overlays and you indicated the one that's on concession eight at the east end of, of the road there, near County Road twenty. It, it's actually, I believe it's actually dangerous, that intersection. It, it is so rutted as you come to a stop there on the eighth concession. I really believe it needs some, some attention. So hopefully there'll be something left over to, to do some surface treatment there.
I, I agree. It's pretty bad at that.
Yeah, I think it's dangerous.
Councillor Noble.
How'd you cut? So I'm just following up on something councillor Massey said either last me, I guess that planning meeting. Are we really going to take our odds and sods budget and spend it all on one road?
Well, that's what we're discussing right now. So if you have any other options that you would like to look at. But from what I can tell, there are a couple of members of council that are comfortable with that. If you have any other options that you'd like to mention?
Yo, I have lots of beautiful.
Is anybody else not hearing her? Brenda, you're breaking up.
I'm unstable.
I'll come back to you in a second, councillor Massey.
Yeah, just, I did, regarding that comment I made a few weeks ago, I did have a chat with my credit or road department foreman. And he explained to me the situation. I was glad that we included that part of Front Street that I thought we were missing out from in front of the old gold sea place up down to the River Road. I thought we were missing that. And I do agree too that putting all the, our eggs in the one budget, I still stand by that comment. But, and I, speaking with Mr. Creditor, he explained to me the, the situation. And that I think we, I'm okay with proceeding with the, the, the River Road replacement. Just next year though, like I know, and then he explained to me too, Brenda, you'll be happy to hear this. We're putting money in Laill Township now, so on your side of the defender. Haven't put new asphalt in Laill for a long time, I think. But I would like really to see on the different points that Doug, that you brought up, like Victoria Street and Anick Street. And I, I, I really like if we take a really serious look at this next year. Because these are two very, pretty much traveled streets in Alexandria that are very in bad shape. So I'm ready to go along with this one for this year, but next year I, I really like us to do something with these streets.
Councillor Massey, I think we'll have a better idea with a, a roads up, roads need.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
And that's usually the, the best pathway to get things done. It's somebody, independent people looking at it as opposed to councillors and making political choices. So I think it's a good idea that we, we go through that process. Councillor, who just had their hand up?
I agree with Jeff and Karma. I think it's a good plan. And if we defer decisions made for the streets in Alexandria, it sounds like we have to do some strategic planning around rerouting the truck traffic. So I, that would be a good plan going forward to take a closer look at those streets as a future plan.
Perfect. Thank you. Councillor Noble, are you stable? Are you good?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. We have no unfinished business, no new business. Notice the motion next regular meeting of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I, I apologize. Can I ask for just a couple of quick updates from, from Doug with regards to the resolution of the boil water advisory and what is, because I, I know that some work is, is being done there. And, but I, I haven't really had an update. Maybe council would like an update.
Doug?
Is that?
Just maybe, maybe in the future when you want those, just so they can be prepared. If we could ask those prior to the meeting, so you could have something prepared. So Doug, take it away.
The sound is off.
You're on mute.
Can you see me?
Yes.
I can't see any, anyone else, but so what we've done is so the bad sample was on the section of the water main on the north end of Marble Street. No one is connected to the water main. On that section, so what we've actually done is we physically disconnected that section of the water main. So we dug down and we cut it off. So the rest of the water distribution system is fine. We've done testing on that. What we've done now is we've installed two valves near the, the circular part of oh, that.
Campbell Crescent.
And we've installed two valves there so we can directionally flush so that water goes on both ends of, of that circular part of the road. And we've asked our consultant and our contractor to come up with a resolution. So from our perspective, that perhaps means they should pay. That being said, they are looking into resolution of the issue and who pays is another question. So right now, the entire distribution system is fine. It is disconnected on the north end of Marble Street and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And was there one other one, Deputy Mayor, that you wanted an update on? Is that it?
It's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further comments? Okay, seeing none. We do have a closed session business, so we will go into that. We'll hang up on this one and then reconnect again for an in camera session. Thank you to staff and council and for everyone watching on Facebook. Have a great evening and hopefully the weather will stay good. Thank you. Have a good night.
We, do we use the same reconnection?
Nope, you'll, you, you have a separate, she just sent you a separate connection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night.